Just calling meeting in order, please. Call the roll.
Okay, Ms. Brulee?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Yep.
Ms. Jarrett?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Here.
Indicate that Dr. McFadden and Ms. Escalante.
Okay, yeah, Ms. Escalante and Dr. McFadden.
Form has been established. Next on the agenda, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, citizens comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with any your questions, concerns, or comments. We ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address. We ask that you be mindful that you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. Also, you may not receive a response from your inquiries here this evening. And last but not least, I ask that you address all comments, questions, or concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens comments. Second call, citizens comments. Last, final call for citizens comments. Hearing or seeing none, moving the agenda. Next on the agenda, action items. Item five, the consent agenda. A, approval of the minutes of the December 18th, 2019 regular meeting. Approval of the special meeting on January 9th. Oh, then, ah, let's see.
So it's two for the 18th.
Okay, excuse me, let me read. On agenda item A, approval of the minutes for the December 18th, 2019 regular meeting and special meeting. Approval of the January 9th, 2020 organizational meeting. Approval of the January 14th special meeting. And approval of the January 15th, 2020 workshop committee of the whole. Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item A.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Jarrett.
Support.
Second, Ms. Walker. Questions, comments, discussion, motion on the floor. Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Brulee?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Action item, item six, business committee. Six A, approval of bills for payment. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Walker.
Support.
Second by Dr. McFadden. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor?
Yes.
We went over the bills for payment in our meeting, and we found everything to be in order.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Brulee?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Action item, agenda seven, the Po High overnight field trip. Approve overnight field trip for Po High students. Mrs. Davis?
Yes, thank you. This is a field trip that the Po High students take every year. They go up to Kalahari and spend a couple nights there. It is one-on-one, parents attend, and we also have staff attending that. And they raise their own funds for this, and it's been very beneficial to the well-being of the students, and they look forward to it every year. So they are submitting the request now, because they don't go until May. But they do want to get this out of the way. They're planning their fundraiser and all of another other activities. So they had information available, so they wanted to submit it as quickly as possible.
Excuse me. Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item seven, approve the overnight field trip for the Po High students.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Monk.
Support.
Second, Ms. Jarrett. Questions, discussion, comments on the motion on the floor? Mr. Monk?
Yes, Ms. Davis, have the representatives for this field trip, have they filled out all the requirement forms that are newly passed, overnight field trip, documentation, everything as far as what they need to put in and everything?
Yes, they've completed that form. They ended up putting it on the old form, but we're attaching the new form, because it covers all of the same information, it's just in a different spot. So I did send it over to him, and I noted, okay, remember to use this new form.
I know the new form, I know there was a couple of some stuff that was added new, so we just got to make sure they fill all that out.
Right.
I think it's a great, it's a great trip, you know, I'm all for it, but just far as paperwork for us to be covered, we need to make sure.
Yes, because what we added in there is that should be an adult for every 10 students and how they were to sleep, but the parents are going to be with each child, so we're more than covered there, so yes, yes. Thank you for asking.
Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Brulee?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, informational items. Item A, these are reports coming from the business committee. Item eight A, financial reports. Any questions, comments on the financial reports? Item B, open purchase order listings. Any questions, comments? Item C, contract listings. Questions, comments, discussions?
Yes, I have a question about the GFL. Is that, it says here that you have a bid for 115, is that the date that they were accepted?
That was the date that we started putting it together, so Robin and I finalized it that, so it will be available for the next finance meeting to review, and then we will submit that.
How many bids do you usually get for that?
About four. And it varies, one year we only had two, so it just depends on how hungry people are at the time, so usually the current bidder always submits.
And the cost is, what's per year is what we're currently paying?
Yes, that's what.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Item eight D, C, contract listings. Eight D, student attendance report. Seeing or hearing none? Item nine?
Go ahead. Well, I just want some verbal on this.
I asked her any questions, what's that, which item?
No, you was looking down, we both had.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, which item were D?
The attendance report.
Okay, okay, all right. Who had the handle first?
Yeah, you do one.
Okay.
I just was wondering if we could have a verbal report, because the high school doesn't look so good. If I'm reading it right, I could be reading it wrong.
It was just comparing, I think the last report we got was September, October, November, and so this one is October, November, December. And we have a workshop to go over attendance for February that was scheduled, so we would be discussing the information in more detail at the workshop that's already scheduled. But you had asked, the board had asked to get a report each month, so we're just including that, so any, yes.
We're also in February workshop supposed to go over the goals for the district? I think we, is there going to be time to do both?
Yes, it's the.
I mean, we did mention at one of our meetings in the past that the February workshop was going to be goals for the coming year, so that's a long discussion, and the high school numbers here are disturbing, I think. So I just, if we can do both, I'm willing to sit through the night, I just want to make sure. That's going to be a long night, that's all.
But we have the high school principal come in and talk about the attendance.
Yeah, somebody.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
That's a good idea.
My first hand, so I would like to see, I know we had talked about it in December, these numbers are a little, and I know we're going to have a workshop on it, but I know that one form that was provided to us, Ms. Davis, that had the instructional time, can we have the principal bring that information and elaborate on that as far as instructional time for the, for those, you know, that one list that you provided for us?
That's the one that?
It tells how many hours of instruction time?
Oh, the kiss, yeah, okay.
Any additional questions, comments for agenda item eight D, student attendance report?
I seen student attendance report here, and I know Mr. Brulee said it don't look good. Which form are you looking at, Mr. Brulee?
The second page here, the one that says percentage of students absent by grade level in year. And it does 217, 218, 219.
Now, is that the one by seat time, or is that the one by day?
This one here.
Yeah, my guy right here.
Yeah.
For, for what, six through 12, that is seat time.
That's what I thought.
For K through five, that is half-day time.
So, say that again, please.
If you're in grades.
If I'm reading this right, ninth grade, 21%.
So, and one student could do.
Could, right. Because it's going by hours.
Yeah.
Because that's why, I think that's what you was talking about, right? Yeah, that hours before seat time. Yeah, so that second sheet is seat, is seat time. The first seat with the four absences is, is that per pupil?
Yes, and it's, again, it's the same thing. Six, grade six through 12, you can only do it by seat time, because they take attendance every hour. Grades K through five, take AM and then PM.
So if you have a four on there, what does that mean? You know what? You know, Madam Superintendent?
Remember?
No, no, it's okay, it's okay, because we're having a workshop on that.
Right.
Coming up, right?
Right.
My answer to be answered, I'll give my question answered.
But just as a quick.
As a graph, there needs to be some other.
Yeah, it should be single, if far as from K through five and D, it should be two different graphs, yeah.
Because it doesn't have enough information on it.
Well, remember the, the first one, this is the same report that you've got, I'm just letting you.
I get it.
So the four means is at-home suspension. Three, if it's a three over, it says documented absences. And remember, once these reasons go in the system, it doesn't, you can't go back and look at it to see what the actual reason was. So unverified, that just means that, you know, we never got a response from the parent, okay? So we don't know, and verified could mean they had to go to a doctor's appointment. So that's what those numbers mean.
I'll just suggest that, you know, the principal, actually, we should have both principals here, and they have all the information that they should be able to explain, you know, not you.
No, no.
They should be able to explain.
But remember, these reports come from the data specialist. So when these reports, when the teachers take attendance, it goes into a database. And so our data person.
In power school, power school.
Right, so that's where this came from, it didn't come from the principal.
So this comes from power school?
Yes.
Okay.
So the data person will be here to explain her graph to you.
But don't, don't the principals look at the attendance? They should have some say or input to. I understand that this is all collected and put into a data bank, but at some point, don't the principals have access to that information and look at it?
Remember, when a student is marked absent, it goes through a process. Remember that we're part of the handbook that we went through and had everyone sign up, make sure that every parent gets one per child. And there it says, after so many absences, this person is going to call this the chain of command, so that is what happens. So they do have different staff members calling home to see, you know, why isn't your child here? So that's the part that the principal does, and try to make sure that they find out, you know, talk with parents when they can. And, and some of these things that show that it's unverified, we were never able to get a hold of a parent. And sometimes, then that's when the parents get those letters from DHS. So we have a number of letters that go out from DHS after so many absences, but at a certain point, they take over. And, yes.
But would I be reading this wrong? I know this is by hours for the, like, say, grade nine. So when, since there's no markings or explanation, my read of this is that out of the hours in the school that are available, out of the 100% of the hours available, 21% have been missed. Is that a wrong read of that?
No, that would be right, for 2019, yes.
So ninth grade, 21% of the hours available for a student to be there. Now, granted, it could be two or three for a lot, or it could whatever, but still, 21%. And then I think if you don't explain that on a graph or a chart by putting a note or something, this, this is a sort of incomplete kind of chart. And so therefore, if I read it, sitting here without any other information given to me about this, as to how I should read it, I get alarmed when I see 21 compared to 2018, when it was 10, and 12 and 17. So that, I think, would concern me. Am I wrong in that approach?
No.
Okay. But I, there needs to be more detail on this in order, you just don't put a chart like this out without some.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yeah. Um, I, I know these are the top reasons, but I got a question, what's five?
That was an unknown.
That was an unknown? Well, again, I agree with Mr. Brulee and Mr. Monk on that. Okay.
Any additional questions, comments on agenda item eight D, student attendance report? Hearing or seeing none, moving the agenda forward. Item nine, superintendent's comments. Madam Superintendent.
First, I'd like to say welcome back and Happy New Year to everyone. This is our first regular meeting of the board at, since the new year. So I'm hoping that everybody has adjusted these last few, couple of weeks back. Welcome back to our students and to our staff. We are very pleased that, you know, you did have some time to sit back and relax and enjoy time with family and friends. And it is Board Appreciation Month, and we'd like to say thank you so much to each of our board members for the time and energy that you spend preparing and coming here when meetings are called and all of the extra work that you have to do to prepare. And we, there is a dinner over there available for you, they have a SFE, they put out a spread for you to say thank you, and it's a beautiful cake over there for you guys to share. So I just want to say thank you, and we appreciate all the hard work that you do. Also, we do have a gift for each of you, and it was a little late coming, well, that's always, but you actually have a gift, but it won't be here until Thursday, I believe they told us, it would be available Thursday. We were trying to get it last Thursday, but because of logistics, it wasn't available. So as soon as it is ready and delivered, we will make sure we get them to your homes. And I hope that you guys like it, but we just want the staff here at Mount Clemens just want to say thank you. We do appreciate you and all of the hard work and energy that you've put in to getting, to taking care of this district. I also want to remind you that the next annual leadership conference, it has been scheduled for November the 5th through the 8th of 2020. We can't register anyone just yet because that has not opened, but just wanted to give you a heads up that we do have information that the leadership conference will be in Lansing this coming year. And at our last meeting, I believe in December, it mentioned that it would be great if all members could attend, and we wanted to make sure we got you this information as soon as possible. Okay, that's fine. And right now, MASA is holding this annual conference downtown Detroit, and I was there today, and the last session that we attended was put on by a number of students throughout the tri-county area. And, and we had several, I think it was 12 different districts, superintendents on the panel. And the students were explaining that no matter what district you're in, that they share the same issues no matter what. It was alarming for me to, to hear from the students that from Novi, to say that it is perceived that they are a great district, everyone's doing wonderful, the kids have it all together, but they suffer through the same issues that our urban students do. That they have issues with their sexual preferences, being bullied, no one does anything, they have issues with parents migrating to the US, and they're expected to be straight A students so they could go on to college, and they're in single-family homes where, just like our students, they have to be at home to take care of their siblings and help them with homework, and they don't get a chance to do their homework until 10, 11 o'clock at night, and not getting in the bed until 3:00, and then having to get up. And as adults in the buildings, we're expecting them to be adults, doing all of these adult things, and not having any compassion to all of the homework that they have, taking all these AP classes, and how upset they, the pressure that they're feeling, and how the adults believe that putting policemen in buildings, although they said that they realize there are far more police presence in the urban schools than there are in the suburban, but adults believe that putting police officers in buildings make them feel safe, and they said it doesn't, it just brings on more anxiety, especially as they put it, they're brown students, that you find more police presence in where there are more brown students. And there is already a conflict, or there's no trust with police officers, and then you're bringing in all these police. And they would like for the adults to teach teachers how to be better citizens in, that just see them, not see through them, that they need to find a safe place, a lot of times in, in Novi as well, but there were students from all over Troy. Of course, Detroit was representing a couple of the, not the boarding schools, a couple of the parochial schools were represented, but they were saying that, you know, they have all these issues at school, I mean, at home, and they need to come to school and feel safe. And I know we've been trying to make sure that we have a safe place for kids to come, a safe place for at least one adult that they can talk to. And it's that, as adults, we think we know, we know what is best for them, they just want us to listen to them. And it was just eye-opening for me to hear that from the students, exactly what we've been trying to reiterate. And they use the word adjustment as opposed to change. We always talk about heart, change is heart. They said they're not asking for change, because they know it's not going to happen overnight, but make adjustments. And I was thinking, how profound, if we looked at what we're trying to do, to make small adjustments along the way, so that we all can be able to make the, the switch to the behavior that we're expecting from them, that that's what we need to do, and that, and they also said that this system, the school system, is not set up for most people today. And one superintendent said that, he agreed, that said that this system, our school system is set up for the middle-class white male. It is not set up for brown students or students that don't fit that little square peg that says you're supposed to be a middle-class white male. And we've talked often about, this is not, we don't have the same students that we're teaching today that we have when we were in school, or even the teachers. This is not the same type of education that our kids are looking for. And for teachers to be mindful that their hateful words hurt, we had one student that said, that a teacher actually told her, because she believes she's bisexual, the teacher told her that she needed to be hung and killed because she did not fit into the normal, that she was a disgrace to mankind. And she said the lady didn't understand that, that she had tried to commit suicide several times. And I just want to remind us that sometimes we're thinking out loud and don't realize it, but the kids hear us, and so as adults, we just have to be mindful of what comes out of our mouths and how we treat, we think that we are being kind to kids, but our mannerisms sometimes tells it all. So we just all need to be mindful, and it doesn't matter if we're in urban or suburban schools, that our kids are listening to us, and they're asking us to be more kind and to be, show this human side, and that we're not all perfect, that, but share that, be willing to share that and put yourself out, that because you're vulnerable does not mean that you're weak. And too often, we don't show our vulnerability, and they're just asking, as people, we need to do that, to show our vulnerable side, and they don't look at us because we don't all have it together. Be willing to share that. And they said that would give them comfort to know, but even if you don't have it all together, you're going to be okay. And that's what they need to hear from us. So that session was very powerful, and they're going to be trying to go around the entire tri-county area to put more of these, and it's kind of like what we do, we have a group of people that come in to talk to our kids. I think it's straight talk, or I can't remember the correct term, but anyway, we do have a group of students that participate in that, and they're just asking that all of us, you know, just be mindful and help our students, because they are coming from some really harsh places. And, let's see, and I think that's it.
Got something on there about the school calendar?
Oh, yes, and we, yes, we're making sure that we get you guys the calendar each month, and what we're doing is highlighting the current month and then going forward. So what, you won't see all of those previous months on there, so we're just making sure, you know, that you do have that each month, and that there is a half-day tomorrow and a half-day on Friday. So we want to make sure that our students are safe, and we look forward to seeing you, everyone in their seats on Thursday. And we look forward to seeing you, everyone in their seats on Thursday and Friday, even though it's a half a day.
Any questions, Superintendent? Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Oh, one other thing.
You still have a call?
Okay. There was a question about, and I did get a report from the, from legal. There was a question about the ballot, the absentee ballot application. And legal did, and I did get this on Monday and I forgot to include it. But there is the law in here. They did quote the law to let us know that we cannot do that. The application so states that you cannot do it. And as a working for with the public school, they also listed all of the exceptions, the mail exception, the registered elector exception, all of the concerns that, you know, if we tried to segue around some of the words that it's a law that said you still can't do it. So even though we can have the applications available in the buildings, we are not trained to talk to anyone about the ballot or what's on it. That's what the clerks are for. And so we don't want to stray anyone in the wrong direction. We can give them the number to the clerk's office. And even if we, there was a supply of envelopes, self-adjusted envelope, step envelopes from a donor, we still are not responsible for getting that. But we can have those items available to any interested party. And that's as far as we can take it.
Mr. Brewley?
So is it is, in their opinion, okay to have the application?
Yes, we can have that. Yes.
Okay, then I would move that we have applications available at each of the buildings.
It's been moved by Mr. Brewley that we have absentee ballots available at every building.
Not absentee ballots?
Okay.
Voting registration to apply for?
Well, state your motion out.
Okay, I'd be happy to, thank you.
Because at the last meeting, you talked about having motions written out.
Right.
And so now you're violating what you said at the last meeting because you said adding stuff to the agenda, you want it written out so somebody can see. But so, so the record has exactly what you're moving. Could you repeat your motion again? Because I don't want to paraphrase it for you. I want you to state it so it can be put on the record the correct way.
I will draw the motion. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? Hearing the scene, none? Item 10, committee reports. A, community coalition. Mr. Leningberry?
Good evening, Board. I'm glad, happy to say that we're very well represented this evening. This table over here is all coalition members. We did have a meeting this afternoon, right over there. We did have a very important discussion about the future and direction of our coalition. We may be moving into multiple meetings within a month to accommodate students and adults and other things like that, projects that we want to move forward with and some we want to be moving away from. So that's where we're at right now. We're really, we got a good group of people that are really fired up and passionate about talking and informing our students and families about drugs and alcohol and tobacco and that kind of stuff and the legislations that are going on. So we got to work out a couple of things we're going to do, but we're really excited. And of course, we always invite you to come the fourth Wednesday at any month at 3:00 to meet down here. And we're moving forward with what we have planned so far. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Any question, Mr. Leningberry? Thank you, sir.
I'm having the city liaisoning to do, so here we go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Curriculum personnel committee?
Mr. President, the last two meetings, the special meeting and the, the last two special meetings was one was curriculum, one was personnel. I have nothing additional to add unless any of my committee members have anything additional to add. No?
Thank you, sir. Legislative meeting. There was a legislative meeting, but it was held the same time as our January the 14th special meeting. So I prefer to attend this meeting rather than a legislative meeting. I don't know if you, if they've given you any updates with your superintendent's meetings about any legislation, but I was not at the last legislative meeting because I was at our meeting. Okay. Item D, educational foundation. I've asked Mr. Shiktel to come in and to report out the activities of the educational foundation.
My apologies to Mr. Rickman. Sometimes he doesn't get the notifications of our meeting in a timely manner. And I take full blame for that. Currently, as you know from your last meeting in December, we're getting to a point where we are running out of funds. We have approximately $8,971.33 left. If we offer $500 scholarships to the students this year, we will probably deplete that amount. Depends upon sometimes, like last year, we had probably our highest amount of scholarships that we gave out, which was 23. But out of those 23, only about half of the students actually went on to further education and used that actual scholarship. So it varies from year to year. So we're looking at probably having to use this remaining money for scholarships. And I know Mr. Monk had mentioned at the December meeting, possibility of maybe doing a golf outing to replenish some of the funds. We're kind of, we're sad to say, but we're an older group and we're running out of energy. So we need some new blood in there for anybody out in the community who would like to join us for that. We've done several fundraising activities and those have not yielded the amount of money we want. We were hoping that maybe somebody would leave us a large endowment to be able to continue with the foundation and with the commitment scholarship, but that has not happened. So that's where we're at right now. We're planning on consolidating those funds together when the CD matures in May and then take, probably taking applications for scholarships from the, from the students. And depending upon how many students apply for it, they might get up to $500. And then we're going to also let the teachers know with the mini-grants, there's a outfit called Teacher or Donors Choose. And it's a fund that a couple of our teachers in, at Seminole have applied for money from this organization. And it's funded by various organizations, retirement organizations, so that they can apply for funds and get those funds from that. So we're going to make the teachers aware of the fact that even though we're not going to be able to continue that in the future, there is another avenue for being able to, to secure funds for their classroom. And I think that's about it.
Any questions to Mr. Shiktel regarding the education foundation? Mr. Monk?
Good evening, Mr. Shiktel. Good to see you again.
What days do you guys meet on?
We vary our schedule. We usually try to meet on the, on the second Wednesday of the month.
Second Wednesday of the month?
Yeah. But I, I could forward our next meetings.
And what time do you guys usually meet?
Usually about this time of the night.
Okay, so I'll put, 5:00, be safe, say your time.
We could forward that information to the superintendent. And I think I probably have a lot of your, I know I have your email.
Yeah, you see, okay. Yeah, I did a couple of things. I had actually, I mentioned that at the board meeting. But also I'm going to add some to, to, to the golf outing. What I plan on doing is doing a golf outing and also doing a red carpet dinner dance.
Okay.
Okay. Both would be separate, all right? Golf would probably be early spring. And then, you know, red carpet dinner dance would probably be like early fall, something like that, okay? I anticipate, you know, I've been doing golf outings for a long time. So I anticipate that we, hopefully, we could raise the money because we need to keep this foundation available. So we can raise the money. And I think from both the golf outing and the red carpet dinner dance, we should be able to fund both the educational foundation and what was the other one that Manu had talked about?
This is scholarship.
Yeah, yeah, that one. And we, what's the one we talked about?
And it just slipped my mind, but I, but I'd like to.
Right, but you know, we should be able to, with the amount of golfers that I know, and.
I know I can get a foursome.
That's.
We're hackers, but we do.
Well, my plan is to actually shut a course down. That's all you need is 144 golfers and I think I can get 144 golfers. That way we have a whole entire course to ourselves. And the key thing is, I'll go into detail, but the key thing is that you get sponsorships.
Yes.
Sponsorship pays for the course, you know, that means that we have more money coming to the bottom line too. But I will be responsible for setting up the community for that. You know, you guys don't have to be, I kind of got people in mind already. So we'll get together at a, at a meeting and I'll discuss it more. We'll get with the superintendent so we can get this rocking and rolling. Because golf, we got to get it now, we got to lock down a course right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
That will really help out.
All right. Do what I can.
If there are no other questions, I'll sit down and watch the remainder of your meeting. Mr. Brewley, we'll see you tomorrow night. You're going to make a presentation for our Optimus Club about the upcoming village. And we're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shiktel. Thank you, Mr. Monk. Policy, Mr. Monk?
Uh, no meeting. Just a quick note that beginning in next month, hopefully, if not by next month, definitely by March, we will be going electronic. So we'll be able to do everything electronically.
Any questions of the chair? Seeing or hearing none? Thank you, Mr. Monk. What I'm passing around are the committee assignments for 2020, for January 2020 through January 2021. The policy committee, I'm asking Mr. Monk to chair. Christina and Ms. Jarrett. The business finance committee will be chaired by Ms. Jarrett on that committee along with Ed and Janine. The curriculum personnel committee will be chaired by Dr. Matt Fadden along with Mr. Monk and Ms. Walker on those committees. Next on the agenda, board comments. We'll start with Ms. Jarrett. Mrs. Jarrett?
Welcome back. It's a new year, new rules, sort of. What, I just wanted to always say that. I'm very excited for the new year. There's new, it's a new year, new opportunities for advancement of our students, our school and staff to make an impact on the community and to really grow the school. As, as I listen to superintendent's comments about what other schools are experiencing the same thing that we are, it's important that we respect each other and our individuality as well as our common things that we all have in common, like our community, our school. And some of us are bathers. Some of us have attended here. But we all travel different roads. And I, today I was speaking with someone and I says, you know, we all have our path to greatness. Each of us, students, staff and us on the board, we've traveled different roads. Some of us have had crooked paths. I'm one of the crooked paths. I just want to say, we all still have something in common while we're individuals. Respect each other. Make sure, you know, even if you don't disagree, or even if you disagree with someone, you still need to respect them. And I like the comment that you talked about, adjustments. I call them course changes because I was in the Navy. We have to make small course changes to get to where we're going. And where we're going is the betterment of the students. To make sure that we have, our students are number one. Our staff and our, the board is all part of that. Show your vulnerability. I like that too because a lot of times, well, we have vulnerabilities. Nobody's perfect. I'm one of them. But I try, we all try on the board to show our best face for her. So listen, learn and respect everyone around you. And I want to let you guys know, remember, once a bather, always a bather. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarrett. Mr. Monk?
Thank you, Mr. Rickman. Just want to say welcome back, students and staff. Second part of the year. Let's finish strong. Hope everybody had a good holiday. Welcome back. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Mr. Brewley?
Mr. Rickman, you would have gotten a written motion had you followed up on what was to be an agenda item at the meeting that I only mentioned to the superintendent who forgot to get the information to put it on the agenda. So maybe you should pay more attention to making sure that things from the last meeting are on these meeting agendas that should be. And then you can get written motions for the meeting when we have things ahead of time rather than at the last minute. Number one. Number two, I see that I was taken off the curriculum committee. I'm very happy that Jason was put on the curriculum committee. Know that I will attend as a citizen. I think there is nothing more important in this school district than to raise our curriculum scores. I think that should be a committee of the whole, open to all members, as I have said from the beginning of my service on this board. There can be three people on the committee to make the official motions. I have no problem with that whatsoever. But I think we all have to pay more attention to curriculum. And curriculum is not something that any of us cannot be at. That is a key to making any progress in the future. So I'm quite happy to participate as a member of the public at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewley. Dr. MacFadden?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, another year, another dollar. So we starting another year off, moving forward. You know, some days I have good days and bad days. I do. My 10-year-old son, he's pretty smart. And he came in the room the other day and he gave me a piece of paper, white piece of paper, laid it down. He said, Daddy. I said, what? He said, pick a pen. So I picked the pen and he said, which one we do? He said, draw a line. I drew a line on the piece of paper. I looked down and said, now what? He said, get over it. So basically, we got to move forward and we got to make things happen. So my comment is, let's get over one hump and go to the next one. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. MacFadden. Mrs. Walker?
Leave it to you to always have your, throw it at the wall and see if it sticks comments, which I love. I do. It is a new year and a fresh start. After the superintendent's report, I deal with these kind of things every day. Kindness matters. Our differences make us who we are. And we need to remember that above all, kindness always. And students, two days of exams ahead of you. And guess what? After those two days Monday, fresh start. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. There are several members of the educational foundation, Mount Clemens Commitment that just walked in. If anybody would like to address the board with any of your questions, comments or concerns. Mr. Shiktel has given us a financial report of the operations of the educational foundation and the Mount Clemens Commitment. We, we have a couple of fundraising activities in the makings under the direction and guiding of Mr. Monk. We're planning a golf outing sometime in the spring. And we're going to be planning a red carpet dinner dance sometime in the fall to generate fundraisers. to generate fundraisers, to add to the coffers of the Educational Foundation and the Mount Clemens Commitment. If there's anybody else who would like to address the board from the commitment of the foundation, we'd be happy to hear from you.
Hi, I'm Marty Ellison DeFer. I'm the president of the Education Foundation and the Mount Clemens Commitment. Actually, what we came here tonight to tell you was that we are dissolving. But apparently there's other ideas. I just wanted to let you know what we are and what we do before we shut down our doors. We started this hoping for a universal scholarship program for all the children in Mount Clemens schools. Something similar to the Kalamazoo Promise. Well, we unfortunately could not really develop enough community support. They were never really excited about it and never really became involved. And so, but over the years, we think we did do some good. We had teacher grants in the amount of $23,800 over those years. We gave out $500 scholarships that came to, that was way over $45,000. I'm not sure what the number was, but I think Gary gave it to you probably. But funding has always been a problem. And I'm sure we're not the only ones. I am sure that every nonprofit around has the same problem. And right now, we have no source of income. And we are just depleting funds with no, no way for any to come back in. As a result, we were in the process of dissolving our group. You know, we were going to provide scholarships for this year on a first come, first served basis with what money we have left. And if there was anything, you know, some 20 or 50 or 60 dollars left after that, we were just going to dispose of it according to the IRS 501(c)(3) guidelines. Now, apparently, there are other things that you people have suggested. We would be happy, I guess, to hear all of that. We would probably have to do it at a different meeting, not at, not here at this. But we appreciate the fact that you appreciate our, what we have done, what little we have done. We never got to our goal, but we had, we really wanted to. We really did. We thought it would be a wonderful thing for the town. But didn't happen, so thank you. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add, to echo what many of my colleagues around the board table said. This is the second half of the year. Had a break and back into a new year, so welcome back. But we still have some, same challenges going into the new year that we had coming out of the old year. And we have to be steadfast and continue to be committed to keeping this district out of deficit and increasing student achievement. That's what we're here for. And that's what all of us around this table, that's, this is our main focus. We often all don't see matters in the same perspective because we all come from various different backgrounds. But at the end of the day, we put all those different backgrounds and perspectives together. And we attempt to move forward for the betterment of the students in this school district and for the taxpayers of the Mount Clemens Community School District. So that is our mission, that is our charge, that is our focus here around this board table. So welcome back. If you were messing up in 19, 2019, 2020, don't carry that into the new year. Start some new, it's a new year, a new beginning start with new beginnings. Start by putting yourself in check, making yourself accountable for what you do in the classroom every day. Teachers are working hard. Students should work equally as hard for their own academic success in the Mount Clemens Community School District. So teamwork, dream work, together we can, together we must provide a world-class, first-class quality free education to the students that come through the door here in the Mount Clemens Community School District. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Mr. Monk.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Walker. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. MacFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at 7:30 PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.